September 3rd, 2020. Would you call the bills? Uh, Ms. Marat, Councilwoman Penapple, Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Teddy.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Moore.
Here.
Thank you, Jeff. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes, the two sets of minutes?
Motion approved, both sets made of minutes?
Motion to approve, both sets by Councilman Eagle. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Teddy. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, you opposed? Consideration of bills over 2,000. In fact, although I didn't make the talking because there were so many, I put them all in your packets that was announced originally. Our first one is, of course, uh, City Attorney Moore's and Roy's, and it is $2,480. And then we have total security solutions, which is $4,940, and that's on the door between the lobby and the parking lot. And then we have the water management services, that's $2,750. And mid 10 engineering, which is $6,300. And then the last one was for the repairs to the street, the asphalt, and the total on it is $4,500. Do I have a motion about the bills over 2,000?
I'll make a motion approved, and then I got question discussion.
Okay, a motion to approve, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second. Uh, water management and mid 10 engineering, just one of those?
Um, so, the water management, that one is from Mr. James, is that right? That's for the future alley water line that they're gonna be putting across.
Gotcha, okay.
And then what was the other one you wanted to know about?
Uh, the mid 10 engineer.
So, yeah, that's Mr. White for the design and all that.
Same on, oh, that's the walk-in track.
That's the walk-in track.
Okay, alright.
Any further discussion on the bills? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For the approval of the bills. Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone here for citizens' concerns? We have, I know, Mr. Woodruff.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
My name is Jack Robinson, I'm a new business owner up here in Carthage. I have a walk-in kitchen, some leasing of the business from John Leth, but she bought the hotel recently. And apparently concerned is, is I'm looking at my business, he's looking at his business, and now we have two more businesses next door doing move-in as well. So that's four new businesses in the twenty months that are coming into downtown right here. And the number one concern we have is our trash removal. I've talked with other businesses, and it seems to be a consensus that we have an issue with trying to remove debris with narrow alleys, power lines, and forced the debris being next to buildings, which can block. And I'm wondering how we can redirect and take care of this. To the third talks of the centralized place where we can call it trash disposal, but I was just wondering what's actually happening with that.
I just have a question. I was, Mr. Leth said he had, I thought it made an arrangement with the Carters, or not? Is that?
Uh, it kind of fell through, as they cannot occupy as much debris as will have from being removed.
Okay. Um, we, it has been discussed some in the committee, we...
We approved the use of that land following making sure the neighbors knew about it, and we were gonna do a fence for them. Is that still the case, correct?
No.
Kind of refresh my memory, what did you say?
It's the corner across from the fire station, across from the city park.
See how?
Park lot. Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we're talking about, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, I could be completely wrong, I can't remember. It was gonna be paved, we were gonna fence it up. I had requests that we talk to the neighbors though on both sides, just to make sure that they're where they are with it, tell them what's going on with it, blah, blah, blah. That was, and then we voted upon that.
It was like February or March, it was pre-COVID.
Yeah, so do y'all remember the same inside date?
I just probably remember it.
Okay.
I don't know why, like everything else, we voted on things, you know, we never...
The one thing, we had COVID in between, so we can certainly readdress that.
That came in when we voted.
Do we have that, do we have it written down that we voted on it? I remember talking about it, and being, would be enclosed, or wouldn't see that.
I was thinking that someone was going to ask the neighbors, and those neighbors, and we were gonna get some pricing for how much it cost.
If I remember correctly, we had asked the city to ask the neighbors and make sure that they got letters and everything like that. And I asked that we, that you all do just the extra step and make sure that they did. I don't, I don't wanna like, you know, run it under the radar on them, I want them to know fully that we're doing it.
Refresh my memory on this, was the city gonna pay for this, for the businesses, or were the businesses gonna pay for the expenses?
The city was gonna pay for the area, but it was going to lease the key. The businesses would be charged, whatever businesses will be charged, the key fee. It's key access fee, so it's key only to go in and out of that area, it needs to be locked up, blah, blah, blah. Only for commercial trash use, and there would be a bill similar to trash bills that we already have for residents.
And would this include, I know there was some discussion whether it would include food waste or just...
Yes, that is a concern as well, because if any more restaurants and such, like we set up one, put them into downtown, that's gonna be an issue for us to auto-resolve. And so, not having a resolution to this issue is causing some interest in the development of Carthage, and I really like the way they're doing it now.
Right, we all do, and if we can, I mean, if we can find a way to make this happen, so...
We voted.
I guess my question is, if we're gonna use citizens' tax dollars, how do we make that equitable for everybody then, if we do that?
The same way every other city and the state does their commercial trash. Get the trash facility and put a lock on it and key. I mean, what I'm saying is, this has already been voted on and decided on, so there's really no discussion on it. Where are we with it?
Okay. I didn't know that we finalized the price and how much we were willing to pay to take care of this, but we'll certainly, I mean, I want, we wanna help you, we want you to give us...
Oh, yes, ma'am. I don't like to be standing here...
Could we sit down and kind of, with the committee that was talking about this, would you mind coming in and sitting down with them? And if you say, here's the specifics of what we need, I'll get Les and some people to run the numbers, so we know specifically how much we're talking about then, for the city? Is that not a, do we not need...
The last thing that had come up, this isn't like a, this isn't a separate committee thing. We voted as a city council, the governing authority of the city of Carthage, to do this. The last instruction we gave the city to do, the city administration, which would be you all, was to go let the neighbors know, and then that would start open the bid process to get, we'd be looking at the same thing. Remember we had talked about, let's find the need first? We found a need first. We didn't find the money first, we found the need first. Then we're gonna find out, doing the proper bidding for the engineer for it, and move it all in there and go. And then that would be the time we get the pricing. Am I incorrect in any of this?
That's the way I remember it.
Okay. I'm just making sure, 'cause I don't wanna be saying something that I remember incorrectly, so it's...
What do you suggest as far as...
So, two things. I think the first would be determine, what, if, the extent of any sort of infrastructure on this lot, and whether that needed to go to planning commission. And if you're just basically creating a pad to put a dumpster with a fence around it, or dumpster two, I don't think that would require a site plan for your, for planning commission. So, then, I think if it's gonna exceed the bid amount, then you could just put it out in bid, and then they come in, award the bid to have that built. Now, the one thing I think I was remembering differently is I thought basically that the town was going to just lease that space for businesses, and that the businesses were gonna contract directly with the trash pickup company and have the key.
I don't remember.
I mean, I think you can address that again after we get to the point where we bid out the work and have that set up.
It was on the February 6th council meeting, that was discussed.
So, do we want to, do we wanna do this the same way? Like, do we wanna replicate the way we do our trash service with residential? Or do we wanna do it? Because with residential, do we not bill city residences, is that correct? So, I think it'd be the same thing. We would bill, we would bill them commercial, I don't think...
We don't take care of commercial at all, it's all done...
We know that, that's where we're going, we're going to start doing that.
Well, then we have to do it for the whole city, and I don't know how we handle that, because we only have a contract for residential, we don't have...
This is, that's part of the discussion, we're not talking about what is, what is going to be.
Well, let me finish, but each business, each business has a contract, we don't have just one commercial. There's several here in town, so each business decides who they want to use, and that would be one decision y'all, whoever's gonna use this, would have to make. Who do you wanna contract with to do your commercial business?
I'd put it up for the lowest cost, just like any other bid. You put it out on the floor, I'd do it for the lowest cost.
Okay. In the past, it's always been each business all over town that decides who they want to use. The city doesn't pay for that. That's something the business pays, and we can certainly provide the land.
It's honestly, it's not that complicated. We put it out for the lowest bid, and we build the same way we do, and in the past, we haven't had a lot of downtown...
We don't bill for commercial here, that's what I'm trying to say, we don't bill for commercial, only residential.
We don't bill for commercial currently, you are correct. We are looking to bill for commercial. We have areas and businesses that are gonna be growing, and you're just gonna get more restaurants, you're just gonna get more businesses coming in here saying, why is Carthage the only city that doesn't have trash pickup for commercial businesses?
They do, they do. I'm saying, you want the government as the middleman between the private businesses and who they choose to do commercial with? Or do you want private businesses to say, this is who I want to use to do my business? I mean, we'll be glad to put the government in between them.
I'm sure if I thought that other businesses, I'm sure we could come to an agreement on somebody to use as a contract disposal. I'm more than willing to talk to whoever's...
I mean, that would be fine, we'd be glad, that's really hot town all over town, every business decides on their commercial...
But you're comparing businesses that have areas that they can handle that. What, we're not talking about every other business over town. We're talking about a specific area that has a need, that's had a need for a long time, and it's been brought up for several meetings, and we voted on this need. So, the need's been recognized, so we're past the need part. So, we gotta, we gotta quit going all these other businesses everywhere, they're not a part of this need. The need is not for those businesses, the need is for these businesses right here, that found a need. Now, as far as it goes, I think that you're not sitting here tagging on to every commercial business. This is if a business like his wants to come in here, and he says, "I've got a business, and I need to put my trash somewhere." Well, here's an option for your trash. You can, one, haul it off yourself, or two, you can sign up for city trash, commercial trash disposal. This is your key, this is what you'll be charged a month to use it, and you have access to this, these are the rules that are compliant. If you don't comply with these rules, we take your key, and you go do it. I mean, I think it's pretty cut, dry, like, why, easy, simple.
Basically the same way that it was started with Mr. Carter, and it fell through. You know, I think the only thing he didn't put in there was grease or something like that.
So, if it was a...
Mr. Carter.
Yeah.
Something else, he didn't put, grease put in there, or something like that.
So, like a grease trap, and grease traps are easy, like, you're talking about half the size of this table, and it'd take like ten restaurants to fill it up.
But if I were one of the neighbors, the two neighbors that's down there, I'd wanna know what's gonna be put in there.
Absolutely.
You know, that's why we should go to them and tell them, okay, this is what they're gonna be putting in there, that's it.
If I live there, I wanna know exactly what's going on there.
I want some things in there.
And that's why, that's why I'm so adamant on making sure that we go above and beyond to make sure those two neighbors know what we're looking at doing, and know all the details, not, hey, we're throwing a dumpster here, he used to it, but we're putting a fence in, it's gonna be nice, and it's, you know...
But they should be briefed on what is what's going on.
Absolutely.
So, just so I'm clear, we're going to allow them to put a dumpster on our property? There'll be a fence around it?
No, no, we didn't say that. We didn't say that at all, we just said that the city will get, the city will get a commercial dumpster and charge anyone who uses it, they will charge them for this dumpster.
So, let me first of all ask, are we then going to have to do this for every business in town, and do you know what it costs?
Only the participating businesses. You don't have to, you don't have to do it for anybody. It's a service that's offered, you can choose to get trash service or not.
Well, we then choose which company for them that they're gonna be forced to use to pay.
If the city's involved, we have to offer it out for a bid, and we have to vote upon the bid. We can't just go and pick and choose who are favorite dumpster areas, we have to do it as a city.
Okay. Have we done, can we do an evaluation of how many businesses we will have to service that way, and see how much it costs the city to do that? Because we have a number of businesses who...
I encourage you to go up and down Main Street, talk on everyone's business.
Sam, would you do that?
Cole, you can probably address this, but it's my understanding, a year ago or whatever, there was a merchants' association being developed. Does that follow in the bar, or? Because my thinking was, that if we want this to happen, that if we do have an active purchase, or if we put together an active purchase association, can help develop the answers that we need to satisfy the needs of the businesses and works together.
Bill, we had an active purchase association about three years ago, correct? About three, four years ago?
We, we had meetings, I have an email list, it is still active, other than the fact that they haven't met for each week in a long time.
Yeah.
And if anyone wanted to be added to that, and it can, under the auspices of the chamber, become a 501(c)(3) if they want to, or they can just add them to the chamber charter, and they can, the chamber is more than happy to do that, anything we need to do. They can use the building for meetings, we are at their disposal.
And we were working on it back around February, March, getting it going, and then no one wanted to leave. And, you know, I think everybody's about willing to leave in, but it's just, yeah, like, you know...
Well, I'm on merchant, obviously, but I don't mind giving it for anything I can say.
So, I mean, I think, I think if you are, I mean, I don't think we need to make a motion on it, I think we just need to fall forward with what we need to do. Need to alert the residences, city needs to do that, not us, city needs to do that. Alert the residences, give them a detail, and then, city needs to draw some plans on how we're gonna do this, and...
Do you know which businesses, do we have some names of businesses that, do we know of any businesses, so we know who's interested? We can have a talk with them, who are interested in this?
Well, just in the bill nominee, that's four businesses.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate it.
I'd be interested, yeah, I'll participate, I'll put my business on it, I'm leasing for someone else, but I'll put my, I'll do mine over there. I know John's business down here probably would, Canvas Place, maybe, I don't know how much trash they have.
I would mind seeing the help center trash go over there myself, because the dump truck comes in there every day, and it's running up the alleyway, as you can see, and every time it picks it up, they got it backed up and pulled down into the parking lot museum, backed up and tore a hark in, and every time they do that, they dumping that nasty water out, the trucks taking it up the back of the building.
I know that...
That would be too up to them, though, we couldn't force them to use that.
I know, it's not up to you, I'm just saying, that might help solve some of the problems, but I had to get that some essential...
Do we have an idea of what capacity we're talking about, that would be brought in every week, or do we know?
I, just for myself and for all businesses.
Well, I'm, the businesses you've talked with, you kinda have to know.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just trying to get a bigger picture of this, we certainly want to know what it does.
Well, I'm definitely gonna have a cardboard disposal, and of course, restaurant trash, and then I'm gonna have grease as well from the fryer and stuff. So, those are the three items that I particularly need. Now, the other businesses might not need all those things, but I definitely know that some of these boutiques, some John's, and Holly's, they have a cardboard, I'm sure they're probably interested in some of that thing to, you know, help dispose of the trash. And I think just getting it away from the alleyway would definitely help the appearance of this backyard, this whole town right here.
So, if the town, I just try and foresee where this goes, if the town then bids out for every commercial business in town, who they think would be the lowest bidder, and there's a problem, are we responsible, or are you responsible?
If there's a problem, I think it follows a contract with the disposal company.
I think...
Yeah, I think you could set it up either way, but it sounds like the council was wanting to have it with the contract with the city, which again, they'll need to be bid out. I do think, to your point, Mayor, I think maybe one of the first steps before they go about to bid it is to identify the area.
Capacity, yeah. I was gonna ask you if you want me to, Mayor, I'll go walk around all our businesses, what we think capacity is. A five-day restaurant like me is gonna be different than a seven-day restaurant like him. There's gonna be different capacities, and so, guest gauging capacities, and it's an estimate, but I think you're just, I mean, I think you're, you, I don't know, would we charge on capacity?
The more people, it looks like they would participate in it, the lower the price would be, I think.
Unless you have to do pickups twice a week, or three times a week.
And we could ask with their, we'd go around and ask capacity, and maybe we could do like a three-tier capacity. I mean, I think probably a business like mine would probably be the highest tier as far as trash going. Restaurants are gonna be a higher tier, but your retail shops are gonna be a lot lower tier. Now, they might have more cardboard on their end, but they're not gonna have that food disposal.
It just falls off the grace of the big thing.
Well, that's one of the problems, I think, that they pointed out, the neighbors, is that they don't want rats and rodents being attracted.
Well, rarely, and I can't say absolutely, but rarely do you see it in a dumpster that properly closes.
Yeah, you're not gonna get it in there because...
Unless somebody leaves the door.
If they leave it open, yeah.
I, I'm, just, I want our two points to say, number one, we've had at least one business leave town because we were not being business-friendly. And it was not, I don't think, the council's intention to not be business-friendly. So, we need to do everything we can to not only attract new businesses, but to keep the ones we've got. And I'm just curious, I didn't know anything about what you're gonna, I'd love to hear what y'all would do.
Well, we got a meet free, y'all, now it's open for us today for three hours, had a good turnout, we're doing breakfast some lunch tomorrow. Probably gonna get smashed, but that's alright, we'll close for the weekend, this is prime, we're gonna be open full steam coming Monday.
That's great, great.
But I'm anticipating problems I'm gonna have in the future, is in just a few hours I was open today, I see my debris is gonna be an issue coming future, because right now, I'm assigned to haul it off and dispose of it on leisure, and trying to get a dumpster behind my building is not really applicable as the power lines are crisscrossed down the alleyway, sure, it's sending up my food, it's hard. And like I said, with the help center, their maneuvers and everything is tearing up the asphalt and everything else. So, I see me just adding to that problem by putting my facilities on back of the building. That is just gonna cause a mess, and people are not gonna like it. Especially if you come in to the museum right here, you're gonna be smelling trash from where you're out there as you walk in. That's the one of the people I've been to the museum.
Well, I personally feel like it's our duty as a council to do what we can to eliminate the problems, and so that we encourage, again, businesses that are already here and attract new businesses, that's a big factor in what we're trying to do.
May I suggest stepping, kind of a tiered approach like was suggested? If we can create this space in our, in our land down there, would the merchants' association or your group be willing to, for this first time around, contract yourself who you want to use, so we don't have to force this on any other businesses?
No one's forced them to, we've already went through this like twenty minutes ago. Like, we're not, we're done with that part, like, I don't, we might not be understanding.
The first step would be for y'all to decide what you want down there, who's gonna use it, is that correct?
Honestly, I don't think it matters, it needs to be bid out. I don't think, it needs to be bid out, no one needs to be forced to use it, they have an option to use it. I'm gonna get you capacity, I think that's a great point you have, Mayor.
So, you'd want the city to get this out for you, and not, you still like, is that what I'm asking?
It was just a suggestion, I mean, if I was trying to get a contractor to come do work for me, y'all want the lowest bidder, of course.
Okay.
It's pretty simple.
So, once we get, once we get the lower bidder, are you then gonna be responsible, or you want the city to be responsible for that thing? What are you asking?
This will be a city, this is a city service.
Okay, whatever, Mr.?
If I, this is gonna take more than one step anyway, so my suggestion would, because we're gonna need to bring this contract back to the board for approval, so I would suggest go ahead and just move forward with notifying the neighbors and coming up with a plan to bid out that part of it. And then we can also bid out the construct, the dumpster for the town. Council will then have to approve that contract, so if there are any hesitations about how that'll be set up, then it can be discussed then.
So, we'll bid out, doing the pad first of all, and then bid out the fence around, is that correct?
Right, but then also go ahead, once we have, you have an idea of capacity, bid out, put out a bid to contract for the commercial service for the town. Again, it's gonna have to be, come back and forth with council anyway. If the council doesn't wanna do it that way, then it can vote it down at that time.
And then, if I'm hearing correctly, the merchants would pay the town?
The town, just like it's done. Again, that's all subject to future approval of the contract after we bid out, but we can have that discussion then.
We can move forward with the bidding then, if that's, if that's...
Can I request that we keep this item on the agenda as old business until this is finished, so that way, this doesn't slip through the cracks from February to off, or September now? That way, we can get an update where we are? Is that okay with everybody?
Very good. If we need to make a motion, I'll second it if not, we'll just go forward.
Yeah, did you guys second me?
Well, yeah, we were talking about bidding it out, you were talking about the dumpster itself. Of course, fencing was gonna, is a big issue too, we'd have to bid that out too, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll bid out both the pad and...
And if it's a dumpster like they got at the elementary school, you know, it's not closed in, but it's gonna have to have a gate on it, for the truck to get in there and take it out.
How big a pad if you want four or four, if you're working on that, you don't have.
Yeah.
I mean...
So, we need capacity first, I'll work on getting you capacity, Mayor. That way you can go forward.
Correct?
So, we need, so we need to know the capacity, and then we know the size of the pads, like this, and then we can bid out that, and know how much fencing we'll put around.
And the way I'll look at capacity is I'll look at businesses that don't have extra land. Those are the businesses I would go to look at, is businesses with no extra land, that are landlocked, where they have no spots for dumpsters. That's who I'll be looking at as far as going.
Can you report back to us who that would be then?
I'll get you addresses and names and everything, absolutely, whatever you need.
And we know who we're trying to...
And then the city can contact them and say, hey, now we offer this commercial service. And then, like I said, I think also it might be beneficial to offer a smaller tier for, it'll encourage to offset costs, it'll make it easier for people, but I don't think an attorney's office, for example, is gonna wanna pay the same rates as a restaurant. There, there, you know...
Teresa, do you have any thoughts as I've seen that, kind of way to approach this one actually, if you'd like to sit in there?
Well, I don't believe that this was in the budget, because I was hired on here in the middle of the focus office, but I'm not sure that that was in there. But I do agree with what Councilman Eagle was saying, that, you know, some businesses that use more capacity probably should pay a little bit more than the ones that don't, because that would make it more attractive for...
So, you're saying various rights for different businesses?
I, I can see, I can see the benefit of that.
I'm not opposed to paying extra, because I'll be using things that, you know, Theresa Piers ain't gonna use a grease trap, but I will. So, there's no point in paying that burden, that is a fair argument.
Well, we certainly wanna help all of our businesses, so Councilman Eagle's gonna find out what kind of capacity we need, who's gonna go around town, is that correct? And ask who wants to use this, then we'll have an idea of how, like Mr. Les says, how large we need to bid for a pad and fencing around it. Does that sound okay to you?
I think we're all on the same page.
Sounds pretty good, but I might go in there, I want my plan on expansion too, just in case we got more businesses. I've already talked to several people that know us and have businesses downtown, they're just trying to decide if they wanna do it now or when, so...
Do you remember, we were talking about putting this in the residential part there, so keep in mind, I don't know what the smells and all those things would be, but we're certainly wanna, we wanna help you, yes.
And that is a good point as well. I think the way we do is we can build our fence and our pad for expansion, but we don't necessarily need to get the biggest dumpster they have right off the bat either. We can always increase the dumpster size, we can't always go back and tear down a fence and put it, rebuild it again, and then rebuild more pads, so...
That's what I was thinking, if the city's gonna put a money-built pad in the pants, I think maybe start a larger ones, just a couple of dumpsters, and then as the capacity increases, then you got space for it already, so that way we won't have to go through this process of voting, just a thought, Mayor.
So, just because, I don't know, would the businesses be willing to help some toward the initial capital cost, or would the city call? That's gonna play a role.
Part of the standard, it'll pay for itself over time, it's not paying fees for disposing of the debris that I get a bit of.
You're saying, you're...
After it pays for itself, the city can make a profit.
Your businesses pay taxes.
No, I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to understand.
So, they are paying, they have a huge investment into it.
The business arrangement is all I'm trying to say, so we all, everybody's on the same page. So, we'll start with the capacity, see what we're talking about there. There's also some other potential sites around that we can talk about too, besides just that one, so I've talked to some other property owners in the town area that do have some properties that aren't actually any... So, I've talked to some other property owners in, in the town area that do have some properties that, um, that aren't actually any residential areas, so we can help them about that also.
If, if you've got that list too, I think that's the appropriate to bring up to the next council meeting of other site plans. Um, I would make a high suggestion that it needs to be walking distance for, uh, all these businesses, so they can walk their trash down.
Well, we, we're going to take the first step of seeing what capacity is we need, and then we'll go from there to, to the next step. Again, we appreciate your business, we're so glad you're here, I'm looking forward to it.
I understand, I understand.
We'd like to, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, I believe we have Mr. Woodard from the chamber also to speak to us.
Yes, ma'am, I was just going to see if there were any questions about, uh, Walldays, and I was gonna, maybe talk to the, uh, the chamber guys for the city, so if that's okay, and I'll just go through them.
Certainly, and we do have, uh, Attorney Moore has your, have, oh, it's here, your application, also, so they will vote it out, it's, uh, together, so.
We, we presented our application for the event, uh, also presented the, uh, insurance certificate and, uh, basically described the event and what it is.
Sorry, we're having trouble hearing, I'm sorry.
Uh, Walldays is on September the twenty-sixth, and it's centered around the historic courthouse. And, uh, unless there's objection, we plan to do it like we've done years past, and we'll walk, uh, the street off in front of the courthouse and go down Third and come up Main Street, uh, from Second to either Ward or Fight. And, uh, what we do then is, uh, we put vendors and, uh, kids rides and, uh, any other type of entertainment that we have that would be on the street. Uh, because of COVID-nineteen, I don't know what our response will be this year. Uh, I don't know if it'll be a big event or a small event. The fair, when we, uh, did that this year, it was about twenty-five percent of the attendance that it normally is. So, uh, I'm not gonna be, uh, very disappointed if we have a smaller number this year. We've been, uh, upwards of a thousand to fifteen hundred people attending, and that's not including vendors in the time passed. Uh, what we'll do to start out at, uh, uh, we'll start setting things up at eight, nine in the morning. Uh, at ten o'clock, we'll kind of officially open it, and start with bands on the courthouse steps, uh, have the vendors and, and people in the rides open. Um, that'll go on throughout the day, and we'll do some historic presentations, uh, with some reen, reenactors, if I can get them. Most of your reen actors are people my age, and as you all know, we're more susceptible to this virus than, uh, younger folks are. So, uh, some of them are real, a little apprehensive this year. In fact, one of my standard, uh, uh, folks, that's a demonstrator that has been there every year since we started, been doing it for seven years. Uh, let me know that she won't be here this year, uh, because of the COVID, uh, nineteen pandemic. And so, we have some people that are making those decisions on a personal basis. But, uh, we'll have those reenactors and, uh, people doing demonstrations if, if they are able to come. Uh, at four o'clock, we're gonna have a beauty pageant, Harv's Queen Beauty Pageant, Mr. Smith and the Cadet is taking care of that. And that'll run from four to six, and then, uh, from six to seven, we'll do our setup, and then we'll have our paid band. We generally get a band, uh, either a good local band or a band out of Nashville. This year, we're looking at even the Blue Heavers or Good Rocky tonight. And they'll come in and they'll do a performance from seven o'clock until whenever they get tired or the crowd leaves. Uh, and, and then we actually knock it off usually at ten o'clock, uh, is usually as long as we go on there. Uh, Mr. Sonny Carter will do traffic control for us. And, uh, we have contacted the, uh, the only authority we have here in county for Corona and COVID, uh, in, information is the Smith County Corona Test Force. We contacted, uh, Dr. Duke, and we're working with him on, uh, guidelines for our vendors and, uh, things of that nature and what we need to do. We are going to extr, uh, encourage very much the wearing masks. Uh, we are not going to require it, uh, because, uh, what I have told, the state is not requiring, the city is not, and the county is not. So, uh, when somebody has missed you in the city, we're not sure that we can require it, but we're gonna encourage them very, uh, much to wear a mask. Our vendors, we are going to require to wear a mask and to provide hand sanitizer and to clean. Uh, also, I'm talking with, uh, Junior Nesbit, uh, Mr. Forsyth Jr., he is with the, uh, community service, uh, part of the county. And he's gonna provide folks to do cleaning as he has in years past, and they'll be there to help us set up and clean and things of that nature. And so, uh, we're planning on it to be, uh, as safe as possible of a day and also still be a, a good day. Uh, Racton Roofing is coming with their Zipline this year, they're also coming with the, uh, NASCAR simulator. Uh, Mr. Roland is gonna bring his bungee jump back this year, and we're in discussions with, uh, Dr. Duke and, uh, guidelines on his, uh, bouncy house. And we're talking about him bringing that and figuring out how we can get children in that house and he's to be cleaned for it to be a safe environment. Uh, I hope I haven't missed anything about Walldays, yes?
Uh, you said the setup would be that morning, you're not gonna do it tonight?
Well, we, we usually block the street off the night before, and, and we, we try to wait until all the ballgame traffic is done. And so, we try to block it off after that, and then we actually will allow people to come the night before if they want to.
Yeah.
But officially, uh, setup is like eight, nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woodard.
Uh, could I add one thing? Uh, the Chamber of Commerce does this event for the city of Carthage and Forsyth County. We are, we were asked years ago to do this for the city, and that's why we do it. Uh, it's not something we do for ourselves, we do not make money on. Uh, we get a grant from the ABC, uh, Arts Council, and we take that grant and we match it up with sponsor money, and that's how we're able to do this. It costs city workers six to eight thousand dollars to put Walldays on. And we spend all of that money on Walldays and on advertising for that. And we do that for the city of Carthage. We were requested years ago to take over the Heritage Festival, which the city of Carthage was doing, and to transform it into something, and that's why it's become Walldays. So, I, I wanna make it very clear, we do this for you. This is your event and it's none of these businesses here. Uh, we have been told by the businesses that they're, this is the largest single day that they have in business of the, in the years past. Can't speak to this year, but I know in the future it will. And, uh, I feel like it is an event that is growing each year, and then we'll be able to, uh, have something that's big for Smith County. Also like to mention that we do the Jeepers Creepers October the thirty-third. Uh, we do have the insurance, and that's already set up. Uh, I talked to Dr. Duke, and he feels that we can do that in a safe manner. If I have people that won't participate, we will do that again this year on Main Street and, uh, for, for the children here in the town and in the county. Hometown Christmas, the Christmas parade is, uh, the weekend after Thanksgiving. We have the insurance set up already, and, uh, we want to do that event, and we plan to do that event. We don't really have vendors, but we do have entertainment, and we have several other things going on, and even the Christmas tree lighting. And again, we do this for the town and for the businesses here, that's why, that's why the Chamber of Commerce exists. Also, I, I'd like to offer that we can be an act for you. Uh, you already are paying us to be an act for you, and it's, it's like you're in a, a horse sitting in your driveway that you never drive. Use us, I've got meeting rooms down there, I have Zoom rooms down there. And I, the, the mayor helped us get, uh, Zoom rooms set up with a fall statement, I have all kinds of capabilities. Uh, we have connections with TSBDC, Abyss Foundry, uh, several other places that we can go get business loans for people, get training. Uh, we can help you with, uh, tip, uh, tax, improve financing vehicles. We can help you with, uh, find out if you're in an opportunity zone, we can get along with. So, uh, use us as, because that's what we're here for. And like this trash situation, if you want to have a meeting down there, and, and if you, any, all or any of the council members wanted to do that and meet with a group of merchants and set out a plan to come back and present it, complete it to the city with this and everything, I have no problem with us being involved in that. And we'd be more than happy to be involved, so, I guess what I'm saying is, is we're the Chamber of Commerce, we're the Smith County Chamber of Commerce, and what we care about is Smith County and Carthage is our county seat that we care about, that goes on.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you. Um, it's just a matter of a moment, we have to vote to approve the application that they sent for the special event, so.
Motion approved.
Second. Seven seconds, any discussion on that, all in favor? Uh, okay, thank you very much for coming to speak with us.
Thank you.
Any other concerned citizens who would like to speak tonight, to, to think this is the opportunity? All right, thank you. Uh, the next is the mayor's report, all I have to report is things are moving forward with the, uh, with the downtown facade. I think there's a lot of awnings, a lot of painting, a lot of new doors downtown, starting to take a different look on it, and, uh, we really appreciate everybody who's been involved and all the businesses who've taken part in that, because it's really beautifying the downtown. Uh, the other grants that we have, a couple of our people we'll be talking about tonight, but, um, things are just moving forward. I think we're in a very positive way in our town right now. Mr. Moore, do you have a report as a term?
I don't have a formal report, I have to answer any questions.
All right, Teresa, Ms. Jones, Ashley, and Ma'Bo, do you have a report, please?
Um, everything is smoothly in the financial office, we are being ready for, um, our all-in-one to come in within the next month. Um, so, everything's going along safely.
Thank you. I've seen you. Oh, here you are, I'm sorry. Uh, there you are, I see you're recording, there you are, sorry.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question for, this might fall in our van yellow, not falling in there, I'm not sure, I was gonna wait for them. Um, it has to do with, um, cause I know it's administrative, the OSHA, um, discussion we had last month.
That's coming up on business.
Is that coming up?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Oh, uh, I apologize, just ignore what I said, sorry.
Okay, so Chief Davis of Police Department should report there.
I don't really have any to report, Mayor, uh, council, everything's going good, everything runs smooth. I know the last time we talked about getting some, possibly some more bids, possibly to, possibly improve some of the infrastructure down there, it's, you're down there, so you all, those are. And I think there's still one or two more bids we're still trying to get, so hopefully by next council meeting, we'll have those numbers and we can report back to you. Go from there, other than that, I don't have anything else, unless anybody has any questions for me, you want to have to answer.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Leslie?
Working back to Paul goes, uh, everybody be crying about that now, to start buying something else about that. It cost us three hundred dollars, we put up four thousand, so, all that, uh.
And you fixed the ones down at the park too, I think, didn't you?
The what?
And you did something to the ones at the park too, didn't you?
Y'all put up our, the basketball goal, the outside of the waters down there, they might stay down, the dog was in there all night, you know, but there's three down there now. So, everybody's happy.
Who would you go play basketball with?
All right.
Who, who would you go play basketball with?
All right, thank you very much.
They just wanted to buy me to do that for them.
Uh, Mr. Brooks there in Waters River, you can do the report.
I don't have anything to report, everything's running pretty smooth at this time. Any questions, let me have your answer.
I, I, y'all need to bring up that paving, we made this work, you can go ahead and do it now.
You can do it now, boy, I don't think it's our business.
Oh, is it?
It's not, it's not, it's not in here, I don't believe it.
Well, we've been there, and we've been doing our own paving, this cost us about two thousand dollars for a truckload of this, and we can't use enough passengers to run it. So, we got Philip Twight along, uh, he's doing paving, are always for us. I didn't figure out somebody who would really be paving, you know, like, why he paving now, he gonna have to wait next month to get hired. Y'all helping to figure this out.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion that we have a lineup to increase the mayor's authority to pay five thousand dollars for paving.
A motion, and then here a second today?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, is that, we can do that just for a lineup, we can make an authorization for a single lineup, correct?
Yeah, I'm trying to think through the best way, I mean, I think you could, um, again, it's just limited to that authority for paving, and that's from here on out, or for this fiscal year, or?
I'm, if we can do it for lineup, I'm okay with doing it, but I, I'd like to just limit it to that lineup.
Yeah, ideally, I think probably what you do is you have a contract, and you have this gentleman, his company on a contract for probably a period of a year. And, you know, you budget however much you'd expect to spend for that, and then that can be paid over time. Um, so maybe do that moving forward, but in the interim, if you wanted to do this on a, say, for this fiscal year, and then look at bidding it out next year to have somebody on a contract basis for possible paving, that's probably better.
So, to station out this year, how, so we can just do lineup for this year, and then try to bid next year, starting?
I think that's fine, as long as we're, we're within the budgeted amount, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Which is in the budget, you know.
So, no, no issues with that motion, though?
I think the problem, as I was pointing out, is that we have to break it up in segments, really, the medium, the big, and what we really did.
I was breaking it up, and I don't know if you can do that, I know we used to do it, splice it out and all the same. But you can, you can send a million for two thousand dollars and wait the next month and send them up, that's not being fired.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for if we could do it by the line, yeah. The other thing I think would be good, you addressed this to me, it's something that I learned, that you all don't go out and like, oh, there's a hole, that needs to be filled, well, let's fill it right now. You all hit a list, and you build it up, and then once you got enough to go get that, that amount of paving, you go do them all at once, is that?
Most time we'll get four.
Yeah.
What we get.
Okay.
Not like we're calling in here for more holes.
Yeah, and so that way, people know we're not, we're addressing that there's potholes, we get it, but we're waiting to build it up to go.
You know, what we're doing is fine, but it's a quick fix, and I'm not happy with it.
Yeah.
You know, if you don't know what you're doing, you know, maybe mess with it, you know?
So, with, with respect, what I would suggest, Sam, to, to go ahead and consider that motion, and I don't think it's issued. I'd say at the end of this paving season, to look at entering into a contract for next paving season with somebody to do this, invited a certain amount for that.
Do I need to add to the motion?
I don't think so, I suppose we come back and do it.
We can come back later.
We probably.
Uh, we have a deal, we have two for it, I find, it's a, it's a whole.
Okay, yeah, probably in February, we'll work that out.
So, we just, so we have a motion and a second and discussion, funded discussion, and we vote on that? Okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
opposed, thank you, then.
Thank you all.
So, uh, Mr. Jenry, water plant?
Uh, I, I don't have anything notable to report for the water plant, I do have something coming up that you bid in short.
Okay.
But, uh, if, if you, the council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer if I can.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Key, wastewater plant?
Yeah, we had a couple of emergency fires in August, I think, according to today, um, because I don't know what the, the Beatles wanna be on it. But, um, I was the first on Saturday night, the transducer went out on the radio station, little station. And, uh, so the pumps kept running, uh, luckily we didn't burn them up, we got it shut off, but we ran a bypass here, a couple others. Uh, last time they had a new transducer running at night, they showed up Sunday morning with a bypass pump, so we started using it. Then they come back with a transducer, got it running, the number two pump was plugged, and they poured it, they had a seal barrier, ended up having to take the pump back and fix it. So, that's a pretty good deal there, uh, they brought it back on the nineteenth, and everything was running good there. At the same time, we had the main pipe to the plant, the things to clarify, it's just by gravity flow or by pressure. And it had gotten about half plugged off, and, um, we just had to bring some hydraulic pump. Uh, we called the state that morning, told them we're gonna bypass the plant. And at eleven hours time, we ran a hundred and ninety thousand gallon tank, got that in there, got a little piece of rain down, a bunch of rags out, cleaning the pot, and got back online at eleven hours. It was a really big day for three of our, and Ricky were doing, so, but there'll be some charges coming in on that, for the, uh, he. Even though we did work, we had to drive a lot of pump. And I just wanted y'all to know that we had that in August, I don't know when we got the deal on it. We do have one in the budget. That's why we kind of put it there on the lineup. We may not use it, but we gotta have it there for reasons, but this one we're gonna do it. I just wanted to break y'all worried about, and that's all about.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Key? Chief Ayer, are you still here?
Y'all have a good report, unless you have a question, that's all I have.
Okay. And you've got some business under new business also, for that minute. Alright, thank you. Now we have grant reports. Mr. White is here, an engineer, to talk about, a little bit about to bring us up to date on the walking track. And then I think he has estimates for the fire hall, they did, did he include this?
Yeah, well, the fire hall, the fire hall probably a new business for us.
Well, this is actually just a grant report, then we can talk about that, yes.
Okay. The walking trail, last time we bid it out, we went over, we're in the process of trying to get that took care of. We are approaching the RTP, a grant agency, as far as being able to see what funds are available there, maybe so we can do some other things. In the process of this time, I guess it's this week, FEMA has come back, it's FEMA, but it's still on the FEMA flood point. They've actually come back and said that we're gonna have to do a full-blown hydraulic analysis in order to do the project down there. What that, in layman's terms, you could paint the, and I'm gonna read this sentence to you, so y'all be well aware of it. You could have painted the existing trail down there now, and I'd have to do that. Since the previous engineer added that 500 feet of trail down there to be new, this has brought this whole study on, because you're adding a new improvement. So we're stuck with what was promised to be done with this grant, so we can't, at this point, if we ask, if we tell RTP we wanted to not do that 500 feet of trail there, they're gonna make us, they're gonna say that was part of the original scope, and you've got to do it in order to proceed the grant. That's what I'm bringing to everybody's attention. But this is the regulation that they're bringing for us. It says that in order to, for any, for a full-blown hydraulic analysis to be done, that any man-made change to improve or, to improve or unimprove real estate, that's a pretty broad sentence right there. Including the above limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, taping, texturizing, or drilling operations, or storage of equipment or materials, it has to be done. So I guess I could just about make you do this on anything in the flood plan or floodway, because if you make any change or improvement to improve or unimprove a property, basically, if you do anything, you're doing that. So that's why I pointed that out as far as the sentence. But in other words, you can't even legally, you can't dump a lower gravel down there without having to do it. That's what this calls down to, so. But there, we're gonna do, we've been in contact, we've had meetings with them. We've dealt with it in the past. The problem is, there's, it's gonna take time. It's, it has to be reviewed. We have to get the data from FEMA, and FEMA has to review it. And they're telling us it's six to eight weeks review time, so. We are gonna be in the process of giving them the data. We want to let the council know it's, this park ain't gonna happen as quickly as it does. Want to kind of break us on us with having to make a study, this full-blown study.
Mr. White, my understanding is, this actually was never addressed in the original plan?
Correct.
To deal with any of the standing water or any of this, and this is also something that you have to now try to come up with. And issue to that.
If you have any questions, I'll be glad to come in.
Are we kind of kind of looking at it as far as that study?
The study, well, you have to send a fee in and request a file. It's a computer file that they in turn give us. And then we have to build a model around. Basically, what we have to do is we have to model what we're doing down there, inside of the model, we hope they got. The last one I got involved in, they didn't even have the model they based their foot study documents on. They made us recreate. At this point, we can't recreate the ground from the river. And there's no, I mean, we can't. Our firm is not capable of getting underwater, of coming from the river, because you gotta get the toco away the river place. So they should have it. I'm just saying, we've run it this before on smaller streams that they did not even have a a computer file to produce.
Is this something you need us to say go for?
No, it's, no, I'm still part of it.
You're somebody else.
Yeah, I hope that we're gonna proceed, but I think the mayor will go to where, you know, we're looking eight weeks plus, and wait until we get the file and do the study, so before they're gonna give us approval.
Thank you. Any more questions about that, Loma? Thank you, Mr. White.
Alright, do you want to do the poll now, or?
Well, you have just, all we need is estimates.
Yes, I guess.
Okay, sure. Wait a minute, I need to make sure we're not here.
It is technically no business.
Okay, listen, please wait a minute. I'm sorry. It is our business. We'll wait a minute. Thank you. The engineer who's working on our, Mr. Jones with Water Management, this is anniversary tonight, so he can join us. But he, they're moving forward. This is a future valley water line. They're getting designs and plans together. So they're just moving forward, as they need to, again, these things don't happen overnight, because they've got the plans and designs ready. Catch us up next time where they are.
The designs and plans are all ready to go, though?
Well, they're working.
They're working, yeah.
Okay. And the downtown building, so we're just moving along with that, is there any?
The facade. You're talking facade. Well, update on it, we have about $13,000 left. And we have more than a billion orders, business for money. A money for Wilkerson also, to replace the money. And there was another.
Was it money Mr. Woodard placed?
Orders, and it will be for two buildings down there. And we've got double buildings, so we go all the way across from that building. So that gets you something off the square. Wilkerson's building will have a new money put on that one too, because the other one was just a tear down.
And that may be three, two small ones in there.
Yeah. The two on the top and the one on the bottom.
And if there's any money left over, there was another business that it...
Oh, the other one was a, the under main, what do you call it, at the garage, as you go off the bridge, the Hardest Building. Ricker Service learned that it is.
Hardest.
Time, yeah. The awning was falling down, so it was, he wanted a lot of stuff, but we gave him so much money. Kind of divided.
This is the actual garage as you're coming across?
Yeah. It was, first thing you see when you go across the bridge, that door. We wanted to do something there.
Alright, thank you. Then we get into unfinished business. Teresa Jones, the second reading of the care project, and then we have, that's in your package here, right?
Yes, we have the budget amendment for the Project Care Act, and that's just where we're setting up the new department for the grant that we are receiving from state for $34,170.
So do you have a motion to accept this on second reading?
Do we need to go ahead and do both in the same, both amendments as well? Just the ones, ones for the COVID, the other ones for the water sewer?
No, that was separate.
It's included. I make a motion to approve it. Second reading.
Jessica.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, and we just wanted to do that with state. The, there is also a budget amendment there for the water sewer department, out of the water sewer fund, for the additional $7,200 that we are gonna have to pay for the vacuuming or the upgrade that we were not in reasonably dislocated.
Okay. Okay, so if you want to make a motion to do both, that's fine.
I make a motion for both of them.
Okay, Councilman Kelly, second motion, second. Now, Councilman Reese, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aha.
Okay, thank you. So we've got those two. The next one is the TOSHA, we have to have pretty much second reading. TOSHA.
Because I know how this is gonna go, can I motion that we move lineup from four to three, just swap places? That's my motion.
Well, we have to, we ran into this, we have to first pass the ordinance, and then we can...
I just remember how it went last time, and it kind of combined. I'm just trying to save us time.
Well, I believe that, you said, Mr. White, we have to pass ordinance first.
Again, I think they're related, you can do it as part, I'm not sure what you're asking.
I just, I like, yeah.
You can do it as part of the same motion, I think, if you wanted to go ahead and fill, appoint the TOSHA representative at the same time you put the ordinance, or whichever, so.
We have a bit of a change, because Councilman Kelly asked if we have anyone who already has the credentials.
If, I've got a motion on the table, just to switch those, so. I just want to swap four and three.
For what purpose? To speed it up? More than all this, just walk me down, Paul.
Alright, y'all can play with it. I'm a man of motion. Have fun.
So we have a second.
I'm trying.
We have a second reading of ordinance to pass it. Do I have a motion to pass second second reading? That we've already been through, the TOSHA, now had it for a couple weeks now. Couple months, a month, I guess, now. This is, this is...
I don't got a second, so it does.
This is TOSHA's actual ordinance they want us to pass. It's not ours. It's required by the law. Is there, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, yes, it is. Again, I don't have what is replacing, if that, I haven't gone back and looked, but this is what they're asking to be adopted.
Right. It's replacing what we had already seven years ago. Every seven years, they have to change this out. So all we're doing is saying, yes, this ordinance, the TOSHA sent us, we're replacing it in our, in our ordinance, because it's required. Then we can identify who the health and safety director is, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, my understanding is that the way it was designed, it was grown up by the state, and it's pretty much a cookie cutter.
Right, exactly. That's all it is, you just fill in the town apartment. Everything else is pretty much what it is.
I make a motion to approve it. I mean, I'm seeing a risk, try to revise it.
Second. Alright, motion, Councilman Kelly, second, you're about to put someone in the slot. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion now. Try to make this quick.
First off, does this position come with pay? I, this is gonna determine my vote, so I'd like to know now. That's why I want to do it first. We can go through all this. If you just want to answer it quickly, we can go through it.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Is there no pay raise with this position?
No, it's an appointed position.
It's an appointed position. That's my second question. Who appoints it? Is the council appointing it, or is the mayor?
We're gonna talk about that. That's the next thing on the agenda.
This still determines my vote, so I'm gonna still keep talking about it. Who appoints the position? Is it the council appoints the position, or the mayor appoints the position?
That's the next item.
I understand it. Thank you, Mayor. In this discussion point right now, I'd like to know who appoints the position? The council or the mayor, because it's gonna determine my vote on this vote.
We have people who are here ready to be appointed, and want to appoint them.
Who appoints the position? Does it the council appoint it, or does the mayor? It's a simple question, council or mayor?
If you don't mind, I'll look and look.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
It's clear.
I don't think...
My recollection is that that is something that is quoted by motion of the council. And I actually thought it was inserted into the ordinance, which is why I suggested it could be done in one vote. But I want to make sure who designates the role of the safety director.
Someone on the public, either the public works supervisor, or of someone who's equally... And we have two people who have credentials, who are willing to work together on this. We don't, that's the only two people you have with credentials for the safety and health director of TOSHA.
So my last final is just more of a statement than anything for the rest of the council here. I would vote for this, on this, on the position that we give, we re, we redo the vote as far as, I found out that Jesse was also interested in the position. I think it is only fair that we have both Tim and Jesse show up, present their credentials, and that we all, if you don't mind, I'll finish, and that they present their credentials to the council. We give them both a fair shot.
Oh, I agree with you, and I'd like to see him put in resumes, so to speak, but that's not really what we're voting on.
I'm not gonna vote for something that people don't follow the guidance. And I'm just wanting to make sure that it's clear, and everybody knows what the guidance is. Now that the guidance is clear, and we're good with that, I'm gonna vote for it. I have no more discussion.
Just to clarify, both Jesse and Mr. Tim Aldridge said they would like to work together. They both have credentials. They said they would like to work together, so it's, there's a lot of paperwork to work to this position, excuse me. And they both would like to work together to sort of even out the workload.
I think the council would like to hear that from Tim and from Jesse.
Well, Mr. Tim's here, we can call Jesse.
So there's a motion of second on the board?
Yeah, there's a motion of second, so, and as long as we can hear from both of them, that's all I'm asking that we do.
Well, the ordinance is such as it is, they choose to vote on who you would like to do that position.
I don't think we need to vote tonight. I think they need to, we need to stay that vote off. But it's right, right now that vote's done. I don't know if my discussion...
Would you like to table or the selection of this person till the next month?
We'll do that the next, I'll make that motion next. But right now, there's a motion and a discuss, I'll move a question.
On the ordinance.
Okay, we're voting on to accept, to approve the ordinance on second reading. I think we have second, is that correct?
We do.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I'd like to motion that we move...
Wait a minute, can you hold the roll? I can't even hear clearly, we're about to sit, please. All in favor?
Assistant, uh, Councilman...
She's doing a roll call.
Roll call, babe.
Yes.
Councilman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Ewes?
Yes.
Councilman Teddy?
Yes.
Okay, it's passed on second reading. Thank you very much. Now, would you like to make a motion about this other?
I'd like to make a motion that both Tim and Jesse can come and present their resumes to the council next month, and we decide as a council, as previously discussed, and we table this the next month.
That's fine, and you have a second. You have a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? So we'll ask Mr. Tim Aldridge and Jesse, do you come next month and talk to us about their credentials? Okay, alright, the next item we have here. Attorney Moore, the tax assessor, where are we in that discussion?
So as I reported, I think we emailed to all of the council, I would say, though I did get some information from the county property assessor. Sent an email, I don't think it addresses the reappraisal cost. And had some subsequent discussions with Mayor Smith, and suggested to her that someone on behalf of the town, and maybe all of the cities within Smith County, discuss, and try to reach out to the county to reach an agreement on the amount for reappraisal, both for this past reappraisal, which was actually done in 2017. And again, to try to come up with an accurate reappraisal cost, and how that should be apportioned. But until we are able to reach an agreement, that would not necessarily recommend paying any of the invoice at this point. And I don't know, Mayor, if you had any, I think Mayor, may I have some discussion for something you understand?
I've had to talk to two other mayors, and they're kind of feeling the same way, that we need to come up jointly, all three cities, with an approach one forward, where we know specifically, how, how do we determine that amount, first of all? Because there is some sort of scale, apparently, for how they get the reappraisal fee, separate from their entire budget. And that's what I think we're all questioning. We don't need to be paying their entire budget, but there is, in state law... And that's what I think we're all questioning. We don't need to be paying their entire budget, but there is, in state law, a way that they determine how much of any of that budget goes to reappraisal fees. So that's what we're trying to use for going forward. Because they didn't have any kind of agreement about this and that's what's kind of left us in this position. We know this is going to happen every five years, is what they're saying. So, um, I, I mean, we would be glad to kind of sit down with attorneys, I think, and figure a way to kind of negotiate this.
Are you saying, you've been talking with South Park and Mooreville on this as well?
Well, the two mayors, yes.
The two mayors, okay, yeah. I, I agree, like, I mean, let's, I feel like they're passing on their, their problems of the county to the cities, just trying to grab some more. I think that we need to, I mean, we need to do our part, but it needs to be a fair part.
And, and I think everybody feels that way. We want to pay for the service. One of the legal opinions that we got is that this is public information.
Yeah, it, it's just a question of coming up with the appropriate reappraisal cost and how that should be divided, but as far as the tax code is concerned and all that is public information.
So we certainly want to be fair. We appreciate what they do, but we need better numbers to know what we're really buying. We haven't gotten this number yet, so maybe we can all sit down and talk about it a little bit more and maybe there'll be a way to help with this. Alright, thank you. And the new business. Dr. Duke isn't here, but we have a, we've got, you've got, not the, the. Okay. Okay, send out, all it is, we don't, we don't have assigned permits when they, when they sign up for a sign, we don't have a permit fee. So that's, most cities do have permit fee when applying for a sign, so.
Are we talking about like put on front of a business?
It has a sign. They have a whole new sign ordinance, the plan commission and Dr. Duke and all of them. And this would be, there's just never been a fee when you go in and apply for a sign.
What is the fee?
I'll explain it to you. So like basically, it's going to be a base fee that happens. And, but also, there's going to be an app, a different fee that depending on the size of the business, the size of the sign will be more or less. Am I correct in that, Mayor?
It's not on the business. It's just square footage of the sign.
Just, yeah, oh, yeah, just on the base on square footage sign. And so if you're having a bigger sign, you're paying a little bit more. You have a smaller sign, you're paying a little less.
But it's a very reasonable.
Yeah.
If, if the, are the existing buildings grandfathered in?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's new signs is what it's talking about.
So we're kind of, you know, wait, analyze some new businesses coming in.
It was.
Well, honestly, there was a hundred dollar fee a long time ago that you just paid, you paid a hundred dollar flat fee for a sign regardless. And since they've changed it, now it's based on square footage. So I just did a sign that was twelve dollars, but we've also had signs that are quite larger and it's the same amount of paperwork. So there, and we charge an application fee. That's kind of what this is. It's to come in and do the paperwork. Because sometimes they come in and do it and then decide they don't want to do it or they want to change it and it's still the same work for us as the city to process and do it. And they just, we're not charging permit fees or application fee for it.
Is this per sign? Is it per one sign per business or can a business have like ten signs on it?
Well, there is, there is.
Or they charge per sign?
It's based on square footage.
I pay for two signs.
And there's no, yeah, there's a limit on, on how many signs and positions, yeah. There, there's limits here. You can't have.
If, if somebody changes their sign, do they have to pay a new fee?
If it's, yeah, if it's a new edition of anything, I mean, it's.
I mean, not to replace the old sign?
No, not, kind of like, well, so Mr. Brad Smith had just done an existing, he replaced an existing sign. So he just paid a flat fee to come in and do it because it was, it was exactly the same size as the old one who had replaced them for a different.
So we already have a, we already have an ordinance on, on books, permits for signs?
Yes.
This is a, basically what Dr. Duke did, he spent a lot of time on it. He's updating it. And I'm in the same boat as you. I don't want to discourage new businesses at all. And I've had to pay two sign fees. What this does is just offsets the administrative costs. They were very reasonable. It was very low compared to other cities. So, but it also seemed to take care of what they were seeing on the financial side. And so it was just basically trying to get our sign code up to par from however many decades ago.
For example, Sam, the last sign I did literally was twelve dollars.
Okay. Do we have, do we have, in writing, look at, not, what breakdown the fees are?
Well, we have the ordinance, but.
Yeah, I can send it out, but basically it's just, it's kind of like what we do for building permits. It's a fifty dollar flat fee for the application. And then your sign permit is based on your square footage. But I've not had a signed permit that was so big that it wasn't reasonable. Nicole had a pretty big sign, so.
Is there, is there an ordinance, is there a limit on the material that's used?
That's part of the sign ordinance, not the fee. Yeah, this is the fee we're talking about.
This is just like an application fee to come in and then we.
Yeah.
We already passed a sign ordinance, so maybe have.
Bill, I, I talked to Dr. Duke because he's done like days of research literally. And basically what it is, is there is like per building, like, or per business, you're allotted so much space. Like, they don't want like a little tiny building getting a huge gigantic sign. You're allotted so much space per. But also, there is, there is restrictions on government. Things that we can't do as government as far as restricting, it falls under First Amendment. And I, I'm not even going to touch the tip of the iceberg the way Dr. Duke can explain it. He's a genius on that.
I just realized, we don't even have a motion on this, so we can't discuss it until we have a motion of second. So do we have a motion second on this or?
Do you feel comfortable voting on this until, where does this spring?
To be honest, I kind of wish I knew a little more about it. I think I'm in favor of it, but.
Can we, can we do this?
Like we.
I think we need to see it.
Yeah.
Did you have something to talk about?
I'm not sure if I knew that or if Duke did, because he probably was presenting.
Honestly, I think this would be good and I'm going to motion that we table this till Dr. Duke shows up. That way everyone feels informed. I'm doing a terrible job explaining, I'm sure.
If Chris brings it out, I'll second that.
We have a motion to table it till the next meeting. All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, we move on to, um. Chief Hyatt.
Yes, ma'am.
We have, you're, no, did we get a copy of that? Yes, we have a copy of that.
Mentioned this very briefly last week. It's something we've looked at for quite some time. The three municipal fire departments, chiefs and officers are in agreement that this is a win-win, and that's unusual. A state already has under TCA 58, an agreement with all municipal and counties to provide mutual. What this does is just steps it up to an automatic. It should help us with manpower on fire causes to structure by. Yet also hopefully it will help us on our, so we can get out the other fire pilots that come in from other places. The only con that I can see is there will be some additional expensive work in our people to go other places. But we're already doing that on mutual license and I'm not sure we'll have that, unless the business will explain. I really think it's a win-win.
And can I have a motion in a second, then, when we discuss it?
A motion to, a motion to approve this resolution. Do we need to have, uh, sorry.
That was your first, I'm actually agreeing. I hear a second and a half.
Yeah.
Councilman Teddy, seconds. Any, any more questions or discussions?
Do we need to have two readings of this resolution or just one?
Just one.
Just one, okay.
I, I will not pay it. It will not become effective until each city approves it and Mayor signs it. So it won't be effective until then.
Right, it's got to be mutual between everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and Attorney Moore has looked it over and everything's in order.
It's a, it's an impasse document that we just, we just take ours and the attorneys look at it and it seems good with it and it's a sixty day out if we find a cause. Waiting on the other.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then I have a, all in favor, please?
Uh.
Any opposed? Thank, thank you, Chief.
Thank you all very much.
Chief Davis, the holiday pay?
Yes.
Please, just, do we have anything in here about that? Okay, alright, we can all take copies.
So, just real quick, guys, it's something that's really simple. It's an easy fix. It's something that shouldn't have been done a long time ago. I spoke to Mayor Smith and Attorney Moore about this. Attorney Moore is nice enough to throw up a quick resolution. What this boils down to is this, we have employees that, and what this actually boils down to is if a holiday falls on the weekend, on Saturday or Sunday, the town always observes it on a Friday or a Monday. So if one of my employees is off on the observed holiday, but actually works the holiday on the weekend, they're not getting compensated correctly for it. This would fix that. So in other words, if Christmas falls on Saturday and the town observes it on Friday, I've got one or two employees that are off on Fridays, but they work the weekend like Saturday. And it's not fair for me to have an employee or two come in and work Christmas on the weekend and not be compensated like the people who are getting paid that are actually working on a Friday, which is the observed holiday. This just fixes that. And this only happens when a holiday falls on the weekend, which is very rare, every four, five, six years. But this fixes that. It's not fair for my employees and anybody else back there for the town of Portland to fix that for everybody, so.
Do I have, do I have a motion now to?
So is it, we need a, do we need?
Is there a resolution to read?
Yes. Yes, I circulated it. Didn't bring a printed out copy, but I circled, I don't know if I circled.
Did everybody get a copy of that resolution?
I did not see it on all of us.
And I don't know.
Yeah, I, I can confirm that it's just an amendment to the personnel policy to make that adjustment in the holiday pay language.
Can you, do you want to just read it out or just vote on it or however you want to do it? We've got a holiday coming up, so I don't know if that's one of those.
Well, I hope it's happening this year, so.
Next Christmas is a Saturday.
Yeah, okay.
I had that in the toast of the case.
We'll have a Attorney Moore reading.
I thought I got a mail-in, I'm sorry. No, I don't know that I circulated it to the council. I had just provided it back. We want to go on to the next one, uh.
We'll do that. Is that okay, Chief?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll afford to. I'm trying to afford, if I don't, he sent it to me, so I'm looking for it.
Uh, Mr. Rusty Gentry, you want to talk to us about the telemetry?
Yeah. Um, a couple of months ago, you know, we, we replaced a pole on our telemetry tree line that runs to the raw water intake on the river. Upper Cumberland, that pole was broken. Upper Cumberland had tied it to one of their poles and they wanted it off their pole, so we had to replace the pole. Well, we decided to look into the rest of the line. And from there, the line goes down and turns in front of the lighthouse down on the riverbank and then it goes up through the Kudzu jungle on the riverbank up through there. So I asked Derek and Les to clean out, if they could, around that line, because the Kudzu was already going on and pulling it down. They cleaned it out and before we could get down there and inspect it, we found out that our three remaining poles that are up through there are not in good shape. Either one of them we can actually take our hands and move. Uh, from that, from that third pole, it goes approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty foot through the tree line on the riverbank to the pump station. One big storm and we're going to lose that line. So what I'm proposing is, and we've talked about this in years past doing this, this is just, it used to be pretty costly to do this, but I want to put a wireless system in and get rid of the cable altogether. And we already run our telemetry for our water tanks on a wireless mission control system. They work flawlessly. And what I want to do is put a mission control system in our raw water intake and have it controlled from a plant wireless. It'll run through cell phones like our mission system does now. And we'll use the internet, the mission site on the internet to control it. The reason I'm asking for this is if, if one of those poles breaks, will be an emergency situation, what we have to do to repair it without coming before the council. But if we move ahead of this, this will be something down the road that will benefit the city because we will get away from that old technology into this new. Uh, we've put this off for years because an RTU at the pump station in Houston would probably run eight to twelve thousand dollars. But technology's changed and it's widespread now and it's got cheaper. I can do this project for forty-five hundred dollars if I move up in town. And what that will include is it will include, I've already got a quote in writing, to do the job. Uh, the price includes RT, uh, RTU equipment to run it, relays, wire, connect to three river pumps, a wireless gateup, with included service package for three years. Now, we pay service fees for mission control system. We already have three in the city running. It controls our water tank, it controls our pump station in Turkey Creek, and it controls our Turkey Creek water tank. We already have three systems up and running. This will be a fourth. And included in this forty-five hundred dollar price is a service package that lasts three years, so we won't be paying any service fees for three years on it. Them service fees are pretty priced, so that's a pretty good deal. I'm, I'm talking a thousand, fifteen hundred dollar service fee over three years. So it's a pretty good deal. I have, if you have any questions on it, I have some pictures here. I don't have, I didn't have enough ink to print everybody's off. But I've got pictures. I can show you what we're talking about. This is just an upgrade. This is not a, this is not something that I've just decided. I think we need, this is an upgrade to an existing system that's forty-four years old and failing. And it's going to, the total cost of the project will be forty-five hundred. I have the money and equipment and machinery budget.
We don't need to.
All I'm asking for y'all is to let me speak and go ahead and get fixed.
But we don't need to have that budget then?
No, I've got, I've got the money there.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Up to, I guess, we, do we want to budget up to five thousand for it? I'll give you that.
Uh, as long as y'all just approve me in this amount, I'll take it.
You can take air at.
Yeah, I've got, I've got it in writing.
Okay, so motion, uh, the written amount that he's got.
Just allow me to spend forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred, okay.
So, I'm sorry, motion to spend forty-five hundred specifically for your mission.
It's a, it's a mission, a wireless mission control system for our raw water intake. To replace a forty-four year old city.
So we have a motion to, to allocate, to allow forty-five hundred?
Yeah, just allow me to go ahead and proceed with it. I've got the money in the budget.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, but, or, or Reese. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Thank you all.
Very much. Okay, so we have the resolution now. Is Chief Hyatt still there?
Yes.
Chief Davis.
Oh, excuse me, Chief Davis.
He had to step out for just a moment, ma'am.
Okay.
So the, the language that Chief Davis did look over this and approved this, solved the problem. We'll now read, employees who are required to work on a holiday and/or they observe by the town as a holiday as described above in the policy will be compensated eight hours of straight pay in addition to the hours scheduled for that day. So essentially, double time for those hours. That's the only change.
So it'll be double times for the weekend days, I understand?
For, for the holiday itself or for a day considered by the town as a holiday, if they were working that, either of those days.
Okay. Theresa, do you see, I mean, that's.
Motion approved.
Chief, we found, so, okay, motion to approve. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, but Councilwoman Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have, uh, this is, I think, we, this has been going on for a while. We have a, we had an application in to have a I and I design study that we would get a special rate from a state of all, from loan, from two dads. Initially, it was supposed to be a hundred percent personal forgiveness. They have since had some changes in their structure and money and everything.
They have since had some changes in their structure and their money and everything, so it's 50%, which is still each chunk. This would basically study the whole sewer system that we have so we just don't attack problems and spend a lot of money where we don't even need it. It's something Steve and Ricky, and we even have an engineer tonight who's done this, who actually wrote the ordinances for our sewer department in state. And Steve, can you speak to this a little bit more? Why this is, what we're asking tonight is that we get approval to move ahead. Just because we move ahead doesn't mean we'll even get the loan. There's, there's six people, there's six cities competing for this, what they call pilot. If we get the pilot loan, we would become a template that our engineer will create with the whole state in use. So it would be not only helping us, but it would be helping the whole state to be able to find these flaws in the system to go after so we don't spend, again, a lot of money digging up lines that may be good, that state yours people are...
I just know, I've been here about five years, and our biggest problem is with the INI. And we've all talked about it. We can't build a new sewer plant, we can't do anything to be fixed by INI.
Steve, just in case somebody here might not know, INI is...
Integration and what's getting into sewer system, and water, rainwater and all that. So I know when I first come in, they spent some money, I'm thinking $20, $30,000 dollars replacing some pipe line. And I'm not saying it didn't need to be replaced, but it didn't help the problem anymore. So with this new pilot project, which George Kurtz has come in, and what he's presented, we'll find the problems. It will address the problems. And like I said, we're hoping it will be 100%. But it's, they were used to now a 50/50. And they would put the money, if I'm not mistaken, at $470,000 dollars of initial cost, we'll be in a funds. And when work's done, they would come directly out of the fund. If we don't use the whole $470,000 and we just pay that 50% of what we use. But we, in order to get forward, we gotta get this done. If not, we'll be seven years, 10 years from now. It's still a problem, it's still an old sewer plant. So it don't make sense to do a new sewer plant or keep putting money there if they're not going to fix the problem, which is the INI. And so even if it's a 50/50, I think we need to, we need to try to get this pilot project and get going with it. Because from what I've seen, Mr. Kurtz will tell you all about it, they're going to come in and section it off and they're going to actually find out what the problem is and start addressing it. So when they do put money in, we can see a difference at a point where now we could be running $250,000 now a day and we get a major mang and remade spot for a year, yeah, just with all the integration coming in. So I just think that Mr. Kurtz will probably tell you all about what's going on with it, but I do think it's something that the city really needs to get on. And for what's on board, we gotta fix the sewer lines before we fix the sewer plant.
And just, just to clarify too, that this is just to allow the city to apply for the loan that we're competing with 600 cities for. And as Steve pointed out, the repayment of the loan won't be till the project's finished and then whatever half of that amount, it may not be the full 170, maybe 400, who knows? But the other beauty of this is that once we have that planning and design, it will put us heads above any other city who wants to get funding or grants or whatever to replace their bad sewer line. Because we already know going in, we can shoot, right, Mr. Kurtz? We can just say, we got it nailed and this is what it's going to take. And we're not going to waste your money on something that doesn't even need fixing. So that's the beauty of this, it gives us a head up and we're going to have to fix these sewer lines, we just have to. We've kicked it down the road for years now, we can't keep kicking it. We've got to stand up and say, okay, it's time to fix this. And it has to be, it needs to be us who does that. Mr. Kurtz, you want to, would you like to add any...
Mr. Rick, what?
Um, and this might be for Mr. Curtis. This is an investigation, right? We're investigating to find out where our problems are, where we have INI. Are we going to be coming anywhere near $470,000 for an investigation?
It's a little complicated.
That's my question for him.
Yeah. We, we developed this estimate, estimated project cost last year. And it was, because in part we were told that we potentially could have 100% forgiveness on it, we, I felt like we should try to put everything that we would procedurally need as far as not only the investigation, but there's another part of what is being done nationwide. It's called CMOM, Capacity Management, Operation and Maintenance. And CMOM studies are being required by EPA Region 4. The, I wouldn't try to demean on the fact that they require it. Quite frankly, I've done these kinds of studies. And it's, it's really, EPA is essentially just codified things that represent good practice by any system. And, but I, I do fall back on the fact that they do require it for various reasons. And so we, we included some things that would also support doing that CMOM evaluation. CMOM is Capacity Management, Operation and Maintenance. And it's, it's really some things that are, would help tune up the overall system here in Carthage. One of the things about INI, I've studied this kind of problem for 44 years. I started out working with the State of Tennessee in the, what used to be the Division of Water Quality Control. And back at that time, that was just a couple of years after the first major change, it was called Clean Water Act. It was passed in 1972. And you, the government was throwing a lot of money into building new treatment plants, but also they wanted to build treatment plants that weren't going to be overloaded a few years after they were completed. And that's exactly what we saw, even after they were doing these INI studies and doing sewer rehabilitation. And it was just something that really kind of bugged me personally and has bugged me throughout my professional life. And it's only been in the really last about 30 years, I began to see ways to answer some of those initial questions and which were, why does it happen that we are putting sewer rehabilitation out there and we're not seeing good results? We're not getting, essentially, we're not getting the bang for the buck that we as citizens all, all expect to get. And I think through the last 30 years, I've been able to answer that question. And essentially, one, first of all, I found, I did a statewide study, which has never been done in any state in this country. And no, no person, no governmental agency, no company has ever studied every municipal agency individually in an entire state. And what I was able to do was I got the data, studied it for years, looked at it, including Carthage. This is long before I had any kind of, you know, was even had any kind of conversation with, with the mayor or anybody here. And I was able to conclude that actually the INI problem is worse than most people are thought. Secondly, in my opinion, the INI problem is probably the overall number one problem faced by most agencies in the state of Tennessee. I want to narrow it down to the state of Tennessee because I want to kind of look at Nevada or Arizona, places that were really dry areas. So the other thing that I found was where I was doing CMOM studies, and these were paid studies, I was paid, paid to do this. I began to see that this was a kind of a contributing factor to the INI problem because INI is often occurring because of deferred maintenance, which is a cute term that essentially means that work is not getting done to make repairs, that if it's repaired now, it'll prevent a major failure later. And it's, it's really not a very complicated idea. So that's why we included some extra things in here. My feeling is, I would, I recommend that we have that capacity to be able to draw on these line items if we find that that's really the problem. But I'll also tell you something else. I got raised by parents who went through the Great Depression. There was a Great Depression, by the way, apart from the one that we went through in 2008, 2009. And so basically, I was raised to be a type lot. The, I worked for 12 years for the city of Chattanooga, and I think all those people were raised to be type lots. And that's, that's basically how I operate. In my mind, if something's not needed here, don't spend it. I certainly wouldn't make the recommendation. But I also felt like that if I didn't at least make people aware of that these were potential things that might be needed, I was really not doing my job. So I'm kind of, in a way, I feel like I'm a little bit hung between a rock and a hard place. But my commitment to the mayor, that, you know, I'm saying that because I've had more conversations with her, but basically, my commitment to this community is, if something's not needed, there's no reason to go play it. And in fact, one of the reasons why the system that I've developed and really pursued for detecting INI, which is, it's not any fancy technology, it's using the existing technologies, but it's using it in a smarter way. I've developed techniques that analyze data. They're collected by standard equipment that's used by everybody. I didn't, I didn't invent any of that. But it's used in a smart way to say, this area is worse than this area. And it, and it's done in a way that I believe I can show anybody here and with, you know, a little bit of explanation and discussion, I probably believe that you would, you know, a person would agree with me. You know, you may not agree that that's the way you want to spend your money, but I can definitely show, you know, one area is worse than another. Just as a very recent example, I've been working on a pro bono basis with Bruce Meyer down in Carthage, or excuse me, Cartwright Creek, which is right near Franklin. It's a little investor-owned UD center. And a couple of years ago, they had some flow monitoring done. I analyzed that, made a recommendation of where they needed to target their effort for, for doing sewer rehabilitation. They had just finished doing the follow-up monitoring, which to me is kind of a essential, you've got to be able to know where you are as a baseline and then follow up and say, okay, what have we accomplished? And it's got to be done in an objective, measurable way. This, this is not an opinion type of thing. I, I don't go in without the numbers. And we were able to see that they have reduced their dry weather leakage, which is continuous leakage into their system, not just some wet weather leakage, but dry weather leakage. They had knocked off about 100,000 to 150,000. They're going into a treatment plant that is a 4 million, or 250,000 gallons a day. And they, that plant was so receiving, so much water continuously, they were exceeding basically their, their basic flow threshold almost every day. So by knocking, knocking off 150, 200,000 gallons, they were knocking that down to now about half the time that they, they actually have enough treatment capacity that can handle the flow. So I, I've seen this happen and like I say, I just toss that out. Somebody wants to talk to Mr. Bruce Meyer, you know, if you want to use that as a reference. I don't mean as a reference to me, I mean as a reference to the kind of process that can be applied. And the mayor mentioned about this being a pilot project. That's really what excites me and why I was excited about working with this project. I, I'm not the lead person on this. In fact, I advised the mayor and advised the city to have somebody who is a full-time engineering firm. I'm, I'm kind of semi-retired. And I really just specialize in the INI detection part of it and the sewer recommendations for correcting it. But the thing is, I see this wonderful opportunity, not only to take care of some problems here in Carthage, but as the mayor said, the, what the state really wants, TDEC wants, the SRF people want, is to be able to have some kind of model that says, you know, this could be replicated in other cities in the state. And believe me, I probably know more about those other cities than anybody in the state because of having done the study. And it's, it's a crying shame to see the amount of money that's being wasted not by malfeasance, it's not by poor intentions, but just the systems aren't operating right. I'm sorry.
And then you bring up a good point, we just thought about it. TDEC mentioned to us that, for new businesses, for instance, which we hope we'll be getting more of here in town. Right now, we can't handle them, but if we can get our INI in some kind of control, that gives us more capacity then to help new businesses, new homes to have a sewer system. Right now, we just don't have that because of the huge, huge problem yet. And then, as we said earlier, once we get a study like this, we may have a really good break then getting some great grants for the whole system to be redone. And this other half that we now realize we would have to come up with, I've already talked with some groups about possible grants, about possible loans to fill in that other half. So it's not like we're going to have to totally absolve us. We have until the end of the project to even start paying for this. So there are other possibilities for us to pay off that 50% or get the money for that 50%.
I think we're on the same page with the INI problem we want to fix. I think we're all in agreement there. I just, I just want to make sure I'm calling the roadmap for this. The roadmap is that we found a problem, INI. We are voting right now just to apply for a grant, see if we do it.
Just apply for a loan.
Let's say, let's say we get this, we would still have to vote on that amount. Am I correct in that? Okay. So then let's say we do that and we find out whatever that cost is, then, you know, we get to that point. And what he does is he's going to say, this area here needs it, this area here needs it, this area here needs it. And then we focus our resources to those areas instead of wasting them in other areas. And we vote in those particular ones in that particular order. But this grant right here is only for the research?
The planning and design of how we...
The planning and the design of it, okay.
For research, planning and design of how, then we can take that plan then to any organization, grants, whatever, and say, we had it on board, we figured it out. But the problem is, we're not going to borrow money for all this over here. We're just going to borrow it or get a grant for this, this that we need to fix.
So I'm on board, 100%. So far, I'm on board, 100% so far. What I'm asking is, and I know you can't tell me right off the bat, but do you see this hitting that kind of number? Is that, that numbers what scares me?
Yeah.
And that's, that's my, that's my only concern.
Okay. I, it, it's possible. But let me give you another number that I think maybe is, would be a little, give you a little more hope. And that is that what I'm seeing is using this type of approach that is embedded here and is, that I talked about with your engineer and with mayor, is that to me, a well-organized sewer rehabilitation project, what to be able to remove 50%, that's my, that's actually my threshold.
That's what he's been talking about. He want, he, they're wanting 50, they're, they're saying if we fix it, it's 50%. 50% is going to be huge for us because like the mayor said, it's our capacity. So, I mean, and again, I guess, I guess we just, you know, we vote on this and we see where it goes, we hope that it's lower. But I do like the idea that being a well-organized, thought-out plan, we're well informed of what's going on, the talent is, and we see what's going on, so...
And again, this is just to go forward, to apply for a loan. That's how we're doing it.
I've got a question, if you could, please answer this about 24, 25 words or less and I'll break it out all night.
Sure.
What happened, did we started out with 100% grant and we're down to 50%?
The, their funding just didn't work like they thought it would work. And they, and they just didn't have funding that they were hoping to get in. So they had, everybody only gets 50%, that's all they're offering. So unfortunately, that's, that's just kind of like what's happening a lot with the state right now. Their funding is just not there they thought it would be. Unfortunately. But again, I do believe there, there's a way we can get a grant or whatever for the other half of this because we won't have to pay this until the project's finished, perhaps. And, and, you know, maybe we'll breathe the cost down. I'm hoping also that we can.
I'd like to motion that we...
And one other thing, I'm so sorry. The other thing is, the state really emphasized, when you talk about replacing sewer lines, we're not talking about 200,000, we're talking about millions, millions of dollars. So if we could save half of 5 million, that would, that would be pretty darn good. We could do that.
I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution 20200902.
Okay. Motion made by, possibly, Evil, if I have second.
I don't know if we necessarily have much choice. I'll second.
Well, again, all we're doing is applying for this. If we don't apply, then we'll get it.
Well, that's an application.
We have five other.
I want to talk, I'm with you, I want to talk my details when the cost comes out, be informed. This is just, I'm, I'm voting on this specifically just because it's an application.
And again, we may not get it. There's five other cities that want this too, so we'll see who gets the money. There's, that is not a huge, it's not, it doesn't go on forever, so they're probably narrowing down to two or three cities to get this. And this doesn't tie in, comes back, if we, if we're one of those, one selected, then we can talk about it again and vote again. But this is just to say we can go ahead and apply for this. So if I have a second, will you give a second? Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move ahead with the application. That's all we'll do for right now, so we'll certainly bring it back if we are one of the ones chosen. Thank you. Okay, the next item, well, we talked about the basketball goal.
Talked about, less than just complaining game of basketball, it's all.
All right. Fire station call update. Now, we do have, Chief, do you want to talk about the numbers that Mr. White brought? Have you seen those?
Yes, we should have done this. Mr. White says two-bay expansion would cost an estimated around one hundred and thirty four thousand seven hundred and forty. A three-bay expansion, which is what we leave, and estimated one hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred. Plug a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in there, but it'd be a big thing, because when I called, the CPA that went from city out, and told him I needed a figure, that was the figure he gave me, a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So we need three bays, I expect two thousand eight hundred and sixty or one I have in the book.
If we were doing the three bays, because we definitely need the two bays, we can use the three bays, but we're also looking at future expansion.
I've really done today, about one at City Hall, one at the old dam service, and I've got a mobile air cleaner set outside, about five thousand dollars worth of damage, because I don't have a place inside the park.
But we've already budgeted one thirty-five.
There's no way that we can go back later and build another bay for one hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
It's pretty much a no-brainer.
So we need to, I guess we would have to amend thirteen thousand, we need it now or just going to pay it?
No, it's just an estimate.
Yeah, we need an estimate.
We need to design it and bid it out, so.
I just didn't know which, which option the council would like to go with.
I'm going to motion that we go with the three bay.
I'll second.
Okay, well, motion second, go with three bay, more discussion about that. Okay, all in favor? So, Mr. White, are we getting, going ahead and moving ahead and building that?
Yeah, it, well, this is just, I think, case they could go ahead and move with the design. I don't know if the council wants to go ahead and authorize to go out the bid, but that's right, and Mr. White, I don't know how anything will be before the.
I'll be, I'll show, yeah. I'll read your lines. I'll be real quick. If y'all were interested in that, February, pre-COVID, we kind of got this going, it kind of fell through the cracks, so they brought it back up to nineteen, so this has been going on a little while. We, we had to that point, y'all slated us, and then I, y'all wanted two options to be brought back, so that's the two options, three bay or two bay. So now I need to know which way to go. All you're saving, literally all you're saving, is you're saving a, the front siding, is what I would call it, it's tin metal, you're saving the front seventeen feet, the front seventeen foot, the back, and the concrete. You've got to have a similar amount of buildings. So like he said, if you want to do this in the future, it'd be a lot more, because you're going to have to redo the foundation and everything, so the thirteen to seventeen thousand is what I'm being told is all you can save. Most of that's the concrete that goes in the floor support fire engine, so that's the savings you're really saving from it. And of course, the road going, but is there any savings to the engineering cost of you designing a three bay versus a two bay? No, it's just how, showing on the plan, yeah, so. The loads on the building will change, in fact, because this is a pre-engineered metal building, comes from the manufacturer, they give me the loads that I've got to design the foundations for, so. That will change, that's why I really need a firm construction to go with.
If you want to go ahead and just authorize in when the plans are ready, to go ahead and put them out for bid at that point, you can, or if you wanted to break the plans back, just where you look at before they go out.
Yeah, like they go for planning.
Because, yeah, we need to go to planning commission.
I probably do.
But he's saying also make motion to authorize, then we go into a bid as well.
But it has to go to planning first, I suppose, you're saying.
Yeah, once it goes there, I'm all over with it.
Okay. You'll have a figure, y'all have a figure to come back to y'all vote on before you can build it.
But let's, yeah, let's go ahead and set it up.
Yeah, that just clarifies, I think the motion was to also to go ahead and put it out for bid once it's approved.
Okay, so then we get that, the motion is to the three bay and to put it out to bid if it passes the planning commission, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe let's vote again, because I think that one that was hit before. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Can I make one quick motion too, just because we talked about how it does fall through the cracks? Can we get updates on this every month so that we know what's going on? We don't, we don't want them to fall through the cracks on, I would like to make a motion that we get updates on the fire hall, and then also updates on where we stand on the 470 grant that Mr. Curtis was talking about, just on every, every council meeting. I don't know if I need that on motion or not, but I just.
I think we already requested that happen, time and time again, so.
Yeah.
Get that get done.
We'll do it. Please remember COVID has kind of hurt a lot of folks when they're trying to do some of this stuff, so we're now back hoping a little bit more in line on this. Okay, the next item is, thank you, Mr. White, too. Next line, mental, I'm not sure what this is, mental health resources and policies for city employees.
All right, so I'll just kind of say this without, I like to keep confidence certain people. If something happens with, you know, one of our firefighters, or one of our officers, and they have some mental health issues possibly, and this is a very private thing for a lot of people, happen afterwards, I just want to make sure that we have a policy that, you know, I know it's covered under insurance, but a policy that, you know, we, that we're, you know, sympathetic to that as well as, as far as physical health as well, and that we have resources. And the reason I'm saying that is I had, had an individual come to me from the county side, so it wasn't our fault, so I'm just trying to get ahead of it for the city side, just saying they went to get help for mental health, and they were just turned away. And, no, on the county side, not the city, not, so don't worry, it's the city.
So can we have, what, what council would.
And I, I'm not trying to necessarily make a motion right now, mayor, I'm just trying to explain something. I just want to make sure that we have those resources available, so if one of our employees comes to us, that comes to the city and says, hey, I'm, I'm not feeling good, I, I've got, you know, like, this, this was traumatic for me, and we have those resources to give to them, say, hey, check this out, and then our insurance policy covers it, and, you know, I don't know, Mr. Moore, what do you need to top up the policy for, but I just want to make sure that we have.
Can we ask them to help?
I wasn't talking, but that's okay.
We get emails monthly about this, so we do, pretty often.
And, and our insurance does, they have stuff, but we, I mean, I printed out what we have, we have an employee assistance program, it offers a kind of mental health services. They don't even have to come tell me if they don't feel comfortable with that, they can go online.
And that people understand the confidentiality of it and anything like that. We just want, I just want them to feel good, if they got, want to come talk to somebody, we can, as the city says.
And they're always going to come talk to me, and that's probably.
Yeah, okay. And that's, that's all I wanted to bring up, because, yeah, anyways, that was all I had there.
Thank you very much. All right. So the playground grant, you know, Blue Cross, is that what you referred to?
Yeah, just getting an update.
The application has been sent in, we had eighteen letters of support from businesses, from individuals, we had all the banks, the road club, the hospital, the grade school, the health department, which we got a huge number of, more letters than we had the last time. So now it's just in their hands, whether they, whether we're chosen or not, well, crossing fingers on that.
Probably would be till January, yes.
Okay, so January, so if we just, I just request that we get an update in January.
And again, until we fix the problem with the drainage and our track, like Mr. White was saying, that has to be fixed too also, so that's, we hope we get it, we hope we get it anyway. Okay, is any more questions about that?
Skip ten, Tom.
Highway twenty-five signs, what is that?
All right, this is an idea, just wanted to bring this because I'm trying to do my due diligence, involve the council, and everybody in the city, and blah, 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 because I think we should all be involved. We are, one thing I think that's going to help significantly increase, I'll do it from a city's perspective, tax revenue, sales tax revenues in specific, is having more of a vibrant economy. And if people don't know we're necessarily here, it's hard to have a vibrant economy. I can give you my perspective from, I'm one of the people, it's not from here. I've been going to the Candy Fork River my entire life, and I've driven through Gordonsville a million times. And it wasn't until about eight years ago, when I moved here, about three months before I moved here, that I first stepped foot in Carthage, because I did not know Carthage was just, just didn't know. And I've been going to a lot of these other small towns, and they have, they have a really nice sign up, it's, you know, welcome to where, you know, we have, and then look, basically what I'll be looking at is two kinds of types of signs that says, welcome to Carthage. Not even a nice sign, not a like Boy Scout project sign, no offense to Boy Scouts, all other Boy Scouts, but just a nice, professional sign from a sign company. And, you know, and this is something that would have to go to the planning commission first, and I wanted to invite you all to be a part of that, because it would go to the planning commission. The other one is, they're called like waypoint signs, and you can put them in different areas, and, and just look, if y'all don't mind, just when you get home, look up waypoint signs. And it basically says, city park pointing that way, downtown, historic downtown district, city hall, pool, just waypoint signs, and it adds a lot of value to your town to where it's going to increase more traffic in your town. We've got a huge campground that everyone goes right by us down Highway twenty-five, and they don't see all the resources that Carthage has, they're going to go on the Highway twenty-five sidecar, they're doing this all in store. These are things that can bring those people in to spend their money here in Carthage. So I just wanted to put that idea out there, I'm going to be bringing this before the planning commission, and I wanted to invite everyone who want to be a part of that up there, just to, you know, throw your ideas in, you know, I wanted to involve everybody, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
She talked about the signs going off the interstate in South Carthage. When you go onto the interstate and come off, they've got like, welcome to South Carthage signs.
Yeah, kind of like, kind of like that, yeah, a little, little bit nicer, you know, so, and, and, yeah.
One of them has a nice one, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a nice one too, yeah, so.
So hopefully the planning officials will take a look, and we'll bring it back.
And y'all come out and join, you know.
Okay. Power lines location, I'm not sure.
I talked to Sam about this a little bit earlier too, and this may have to deal with us or not, but another thing too, just, you know, cleaning things up down our main street, like right from the courthouse, I'm, I look at, kind of looking at the courthouse, we've got these big old power lines right in front of it, and they're not really even connecting anywhere, they're not connected to the courthouse, they're just going through. And even just, if we was just that one side, I think both sides would be great, but even just that one side of the street, we were moving those, we're, we're opening up that courthouse, and we're opening up that main street just to start looking better. If we could, I was going to see if that's something that has to do with city, and Sam said it might have to do with Tennessee downtowns, and all that Sam has talked about this.
I've been involved with Tennessee downtowns now for two or three years, but I administered the thing that broke open in Jackson County, in Gainesboro. And once you hit the third tier, and Virginia can give us more information on this, it's my understanding, and I don't think there's technically through Tennessee downtowns, but if you completed two segments of Tennessee downtowns, two tiers of the grant, then you're eligible for this grant, I don't even know which group. I know Pikeville did it, Manchester did it, maybe McMinville did it, and I would suggest that when we get on board and find out the details on that, because it's outrageously expensive, it involves tearing up the streets, the sidewalks, it'll be a massive undertaking. But it's doable, and I would suggest that we form a committee and reach out to these other towns that have done this, and ask them how they did it, and granted, two or three years ago, things may have totally changed, the cracks may not be about them. But if you go into downtown Pikeville, they've got everything underground, they've got all the apartments and everything, they've got brick crosswalks and everything, there's not one business on the square that sells new product. They're all secondhand shoe stores, secondhand clothing stores, or whatever. If they can do it there, I would think it's feasible here, but we need to.
And would you be willing to have that presented?
Pardon?
Would you have that presented?
The power lines you're talking about, when we've done photographs from the place we've done there outside, we've had to edit it out. It's just.
It's just an update, it's not to try to, I'm not trying to spend money, it's just kind of just trying to update and beautify our downtown, just make it a little bit more easy on the eyes, and create more businesses that will want to go there and not see it that way, and there'll be more family-friendly businesses.
There's a lot of people that take pictures of that house.
Yeah.
It is very distracting.
We have a motion that Sam puts together a committee, and probably if we could do citizens, that would be great.
I think that would be great. I'm just going to take some time going to these other towns and talking to people. The only people I got to talk to is already Pikeville, but I'd be glad to.
Well, as you say.
I think Hupert Combs is going to have that too.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be good to have that.
That's what we're getting here, is talking about.
So we can.
City, private, I'll hear what you say.
Oh, yeah.
We'll reach out to UCDV, and they would, like you say, they'd have some.
Yeah, I'll, I'll motion that Sam heads that committee, put it up.
All right, with it. We may, you know, that period is now, I don't know.
Can you go up there and say?
I'll have that say.
Sam? Got a motion.
Okay, so, motion to that Sam head the committee to relocate power lines, uses, put it together, citizens committee, discuss it, and look at other cities that have done this, and the prices involved, and the rates are possible. And then we'll get that next month.
We did a second on the motion.
I'm sorry, that.
We did a second on the motion.
Well, I just said the motion, so do we have a second on the motion?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. So Sam, I'll get, we'll talk about getting some resources for, we have that, thank you. Then we have harassment policy, council able to, for the.
Yes, and everybody probably got this email, I'm not sure who all read it, from city attorney Moore, in regards to just harassment policies for elected officials, city supervisors, city employees, things of that nature. And, and we've all dug through it, I think we all have kind of the same consensus, but it, it basically, we have a lot, we have a lot of things against harassment, where you, it's just, it's, we can't be harassed, and there's consequences, but there's only one place where there's not consequences, and this includes all harassment, including sexual harassment. And if you were an elected official, there is really no consequences for you, should that happen. I also want to make sure that our city employees know, whether it's a council person, or it's elected, if it's the mayor, or if it's another city employee, if, if you are being harassed, it's your duty to put in, put in an official complaint about it. If there's no official complaint, there's nothing anyone's going to do about it to investigate it. But there has to be an official complaint. But I don't know, and I've talked to the city attorney about this, and I don't know what we can do, I think it literally takes legislation to add any kind of teeth, should any of us or any future people be, I mean, you could go full-fledged and say, we have found out that this person's been sexually harassing so-and-so. And if they're an elected person, there's not a thing we can do about, except for censure people, and am I correct on that?
Does our personnel have other sexual harassment?
It does cover sexual harassment, and it on its face does.
It does cover sexual harassment and it on its face does apply to elected officials that might be sexually harassing. The problem is you don't have the same sort of remedies against an elected official that you would another employee. You can't automatically terminate a, um, an elected official for violation of the sexual harassment policy. If you still require going through some sort of ouster procedure, you could vote to censure, uh, and it still can create liability issues for the town. I just think it's a policy that needs to be reviewed periodically. There's a little bit of, I think, lack of clarity between just general harassment provisions under the policy and then the sexual harassment, um, provisions, um.
Do you have some suggestions?
I don't, I mean, I did, I did look at a couple of other policies, uh, just thinking about it, but it, it's a big, bigger project, um, and so without the council, you know, wanting to move forward, I didn't think it was appropriate to spend any additional time on it, but.
Just out of curiosity, would not state in federal laws, supercute, something that's a personnel policy? Was it with the internet or in the law?
It is, but part of the sexual harassment law is the requirement that the town have a policy, which I, I think it does and I think it complies, you know, but, um, it's one thing to have a policy and it's another thing to, you know.
Be able to have teeth behind the policy. And that's what I'm pointing out, is there's no teeth. The other thing I do notice that we have, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, we don't have in this city an ouster policy, should something like that happen. And that would have to be something that would have to be amended in the charter, if I'm correct.
Yeah, and again, we, we've talked about this several months ago, you know, if you're in an ouster of a public elected official situation, you're going to, regardless of even what you have in your charter, you're still going to end up back under the same state law provisions for going through an ouster procedure, which is almost certainly going to involve a court case and proving some sort of criminal act essential, even if your ouster provision has a lesser standard than that.
And sexual harassment does not fall under a criminal act, harassment does not fall under a criminal act. Correct.
Not, not necessarily, not, not just the harassment. Now, there, there can be crimes committed, but it could also be harassment without a criminal action.
Um, we're talking about both ways, the employee or the elected official.
Correct. But the employee, the.
Both ways.
Yeah, I think you're probably, you're primarily looking at relation, I mean, most likely relationship between the elected official towards the employee.
But it should be both ways.
Personnel policy.
Yeah. It should be both ways, you're exactly right.
Yeah.
But legally, it's not.
So do, do we have some sort of motion that we can, can move on or not?
There's not really a motion, this is, I'm trying to bring this to light so that we can just review as, as a council and as a city, that we need to be keeping an eye on harassment. Um, if someone's, I think it's appropriate if someone's being harassed to go to that person and say, you're harassing me. And if someone continues to be harassed, to follow, file that complaint. And, um, that, that's the point, and, and the worst we can do is censure someone. And that's the worst we can do. But other than that, we can't do much unless it goes. But I think what we could do coming up, and we can't, it doesn't matter to do it now or any time, but we need to maybe look at it, is next legislature, uh, season, maybe put something in there for provision, because like Nashville has a provision for, um, ousting the less elected officials, but in our charter, we don't, if I'm correct.
So would this, would this be retroactive if there have been harassments that people have been breaking? And maybe do agreements?
Well, let, let me, let's finish that part.
So, uh, and that's not, that's a way with Metro Charter, but some cities now do have a recall provision, which is separate than ouster, which involves, you know, a petition and basically a recall election to remove an official, which again is a different standard, a different procedure. I'm, I'm, I'm sure the Metro Charter does have an ouster provision, but even under that, they're still going to end up back in the same sort of standard for removing an elected official.
So basically, you're looking at recalls, the only course of action. So we would have to be looking at possibly putting into our charter on the next cycle coming up, adding it to the other stuff that got delayed, um, having a recall provision, if I'm correct, we would need to have something like that. And that would be the only thing that we could technically have, it's teeth, because there needs to be teeth against us.
You can also add a provision, add an ouster provision and state that these, uh, these actions constitute a grounds for an ouster. So even if it's not a criminal act, if it's listed in the charter as a grounds for ouster, then we could follow through on an ouster suit that way.
Yeah, so I guess, not to make a motion or anything, uh, but this is something I'd like to bring back up, uh, probably in January, because session starts at the end of January, and that we start working on, uh, sending that out to Nashville and, and, and everybody be thinking about, you know, what, uh, ways to do that as far as that goes. Because we, we, there needs to be teeth against elected officials, I'm sorry.
Were you talking about an, an additional charter amendment?
Yes.
And so one, one option, if you want to look at the charter again, is to, I would suggest since the one that was adopted last time hasn't gone into the assembly yet, you could look at what has been approved most recently, and if you want to make a change, it's probably, and I'd say that's probably best just to leave that one, because it's passed.
Yeah, that one.
But.
That was a lot of work, that one.
Well, well, but you mean a personnel policy, what you said, that you're asking? And that they were.
Yeah, but he's talking about an ouster provision for elected officials that filing harassment.
That applies to all official, all elected officials, whether your executive branch or your council, it needs to apply to all. That we, we should not, as elected officials, be able to hide behind, uh, be treated differently than above, uh, city employees. It, it needs to be retroactive, it needs to be, just as Bill said, both ways. So, um, and that's the only way I can see that there's teeth involved, because otherwise people are just going to go around and just harass people. Uh, I'm not saying they are right now or anything, uh, but if it does, I mean, this is for future, well after we're gone too, we need to have that, you know.
Well, that's true, because we probably have that, so we need to deal with.
I say both ways, it's like employee, employee, uh, councilman, 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 whatever. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I think you're not going to be.
That's a convenient, employee, employee.
And.
Good side things.
Absolutely.
It's just not employee.
Yeah. So can, uh, can I request, can I, can I, maybe this would be the correct motion to make? Um, would, and before I make the motion, I'll be asking this possible, would you be able to write something up that you think would cover that and bring it to us at the next meeting? Or in a few meetings or whatever?
Make sure I understand what you're saying, that would.
That would create an ouster.
To, and maybe up to, including ouster.
Ouster and recall.
Um, I can definitely research it and report back.
Okay.
Is it recall?
When I worked for, when I worked for the Department of Safety, we had a, a policy.
So would you do that? When you work with.
The Department of Safety, yeah, sexual harassment.
And, and I would assume, does it get past, got some, some complaints between the two?
I guess most state agencies do have that.
They certainly do in respect to the harassment policy itself. I don't think there are a whole lot out there in respect to censuring and removing public elected officials for these types of things, and I'll see what I can find and report it. If that is the will of the council, they hope that works.
So I guess I'll make a motion, um, that, um, city attorney Moore, um, you, next meeting or whenever, whatever, whatever your timeline, we're not rushing, we got till January, but city attorney Moore brings back reports of the council of, um, some language that we can amend to set, um, and look at and vote upon regarding ouster and recall provisions in our charter. That'd be my motion.
Am I confused, a recall is, that was from petition by the citizens?
It is, but for that to work, we still have to have a provision for it in the charter.
I'll say it.
Okay, so we have a motion second, are you bothered to discuss it? Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Thank you, all opposed. Okay, um, then the final one here is the policy regarding communication between council members and city employees.
Uh, I'd like to ask city attorney Moore, is it appropriate or is it legal for, um, a council member or a mayor to tell other city employees not to talk to them or to report back if someone has spoken to you, if it's a city employee or city supervisor?
So I, I don't think it's appropriate for an elected official to try to restrain an employee from talking to another elected official.
Okay.
From doing anything that would interfere with the employee's ability to communicate with an elected official, just like it would apply to any other system. The second part, I don't, I doubt it's a little bit more vague as far as asking for them to, but, but I think you would call it as the same rationale that that communication is.
I've had.
Between the employee and the elected official and shouldn't necessarily, well, that's, maybe some exceptions.
Gotcha. I've, I've had several employees which, uh, do not wish to be named, uh, they do not want retaliation, who have told me, um, that they are to report back anytime that I speak to them or any other council member speaks to them, and that they are to, um, not reply individually, but reply in a group setting to the council if there's an, um, if there is a question asked. Um, and that's basically been, been what I've been, been told, and so, um, there's a lot of fear.
No, oh, that, uh, unless you're rephrasing this in, with a different meaning, we've already decided that employees have the right to talk to city council.
Right.
They do, and we did make that very clear, I thought.
We also.
It is still not happening.
I believe part of that was also that city council members were not to be calling employees, but allow the employees to reach out to the city councilman.
That was never, that never happened ever? And it's still happening, Sam, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we, we made it clear that we have a right to talk with our city employees. We need that to understand what's going on.
Well, I don't.
It's already been discussed.
I don't, I don't.
And you are, you have no right to interfere with us having a meeting with city employees or speaking with city employees.
No, and I think everybody understands that. I don't know anyone who doesn't do it.
Well, it's all on camera now, so I'm happy to hear you say that, so thank you.
So it's done, deal.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right, all in favor or not?